You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Wow, really?
I'll call February 12, 25 meeting of the board of slot.
Hey, Robert.
White dude's birthday.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we through the minutes for regular meeting on February 4th.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye. I make a motion to we get consent agenda.
Say anything else.
First presence.
So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public input.
Somebody.
We're good.
Nomination.
What's that? The word here.
Okay.
For now. For now.
Yeah, I'll make a motion there. Nobody not for right?
Second. Hey, we have motion made second to nominate Robert Goodrich Conservation Commission, Jane Johnson Conservation Commission alternate, Wally Smith Conservation Commission alternate, and Steve Russell to be Energy Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And right into DOT. CHA. Welcome.
Well, good evening Chairman, Select Ward, members of the public. My name is Dave Smith. I was from New Hampshire DOT and we wanted to come to you tonight just to give a presentation for our project load of 101. Working this upon as part of our work group. And you know, with that coordination collaboration, he asked that we come and present the project to you folks to give you an awareness of the project status and so forth. And so that's what we are here to do. I have to my right Ellen Mosher, she worked for CHA in something. A Keen firm was working to support us with the project. And do the heavy lifting. There is this giant firm that we've contracted with to do the the heavy lifting dimension. So we'll be sharing in the presentation tonight for you. So I think you all know the corridor. We're in Keen. We're just the southwest of the city of Keen on Route 101. We are east of Optical Labs and we are just about at the time Marlboro Street used to tie in Route 101. And we progressed from that point one mile to the east just past Branch Road. And we also progressed through, of course, the Swansea Factory Road intersection across the Route 101 Bridge over the Branch River. We do have some work proposed along Swansea Factory Road as well that we'll talk about. As well as connecting, of course, to Thompson Road and then Branch Road at those intersections. We've had a fair amount of outreach already of the project that we share tonight in the presentation. As far as the agenda, this is very consistent in what we've shared with the public on two occasions, as well as the city of Keen. We've gone through the welcome introductions. We'll talk about our project development team and our working group. We'll talk about the project, give an overview of the project and the scope of that work. We'll talk about our studies to date. As you can imagine, this being a federal funded project, we have a lot of requirements that we need to complete in order to progress the project forward. We'll talk about our preliminary design efforts, the construction and our schedule as we progress through with design into construction. So we'll talk about that tonight as well. So our project development team, again, prize it means the lead from the New Hampshire DOT. I also have Hans Weber, who's our design engineer, not with us tonight, but he's with us. He's on a day to day basis, working with us to advance the project. We've introduced Ellen Mosher from CHA. She is their project manager. We work hand in hand and develop the products and bring it forward. On Ellen's team, she also has Don Corelli. He's the lead engineer for them and Rob Faulkner, who's a principal with CHA, many years of experience and also work to support our advancement on the project and the team. We've also worked with the city of Keen very closely. Don Lucier, Public Works Director, has been very instrumental in giving us good guidance and support for the project as we progress. We've also worked with JB Mack, Assistant Director from the Southwest Regional Planning Commission. And step on as well as just Assistant Town Planner here in Swansea. So the purpose of that working group is to give us that local connection, right? Boots in the ground, those folks that are in touch most with the needs of the projects and the community that we're progressing this project with. So that's what the project work group does for us. We also have on that work group representative in the DOT District Core Engineer, now Frank Lindenberger, is with us as well. So just to round that out and give us that local support. So I mentioned the public outreach we've had in the past. We have advanced a fair amount. We've had two public informational meetings in Keen back in early 2004 and at the end of 2004, February and December, to present the project, to present the scope of work, very much like we're presenting to you folks this evening. Share in the details of the improvements. We solicited some thoughts from the folks in Keen as to what they thought the project should entail as well, just to make sure that we're striving to hit the mark with the project improvements, which we'll touch on here in a minute as well. So city of Keen, we're progressing to meet with them later this month. That Municipal Services, Facilities and Infrastructure Group, if you're familiar with that committee or standing committee in Keen, we're presenting to them on the 26th. From a, say, environmental perspective, we've consulted with both our natural resource agencies and the cultural resource agencies, environmental groups that work to support us and collaborate with us on development of the project. That could be the Fish and Game folks, Army Corps of Engineers and those types of groups that also touch on the cultural side of things, the historic aspects and those aspects of the project. We also presented to the Southwest Regional Clinic Mission back in early January, just to give those folks an update. So we're making sure we're doing our diligence relative to putting the word out relative to the project, collaborating with all the folks in the area. And then we've also had meetings with the butters, with property owners along the corridor with projects like this, which is relatively larger project. In the nature of the work, there's always impacts to a butter's property owners. And so we've been working to meet with those folks as well. Create that goodwill, make sure we're doing our diligence to make sure that they're aware of those specific impacts as well as improvements on the corridor. So so with that opening, I'll turn to Ellen and Ellen can take it from here. We'll get into more of the details and we will. So let's go to this, our presentation will answer any questions you folks may have and certainly progress in that fashion.
Great. So again, I'm Ellen Mosher with CHA and the project manager. So as Gabe mentioned, the project starts just east of Optical Avenue along Route 101 and continues east past Branch Road. There's two key intersections within the project, which include the intersection of Swansea Factory Road and the intersection of Branch Road. Both those intersections are unsignalized today. And the Branch River Bridge is also included in our project area. So the need for the project comes about because there's a need to rehabilitate for pavement conditions that exist today. Currently, the state is doing some patching and repairing this winter and they'll actually be repaving the road in advance of our project this coming spring. Another need of the project is to address poor drainage. There's country style drainage out there and no storm water treatment. There's a need to make structural repairs at the Branch River Bridge. That bridge is on the state's red list currently. There's a need to improve intersection at Swansea Factory Road intersection. And there's also a need to address challenges for pedestrians and bicycles. So the purpose of the project will be to provide that pavement rehabilitation that we need. We will be removing a concrete slab that is currently under the pavement. It's about 20 feet wide. We will be improving drainage and providing catchment for storm water. We will be widening the shoulders to provide five foot shoulders to better accommodate pedestrians and bicycles. The project will also address structural needs at the bridge and improve intersection operations in Swansea Factory Road intersection. So Route 101 is one lane in each direction today. Shoulder width vary, but generally it's about 28 feet wide. With the project, we'll be maintaining 12 foot travel lanes in each direction, but widening out those shoulders to formalize five foot shoulders on both sides of the street. So one of the things that's unique about this project is really the constraints along the corridor due to the proximity of the Branch River and also the private properties along the corridor. So as shown here, we're very much constrained as far as widening the road even further. It was asked through the public process that we look at adding sidewalks and bike lanes. And really because of the resources out here, we're not able to achieve that with the project. In addition, the project does not connect to any facilities on either end of Route 101. The one thing we did a deep dive in as a team was to look at potentially realigning Swansea Factory Road. So initially we had five concepts. Three of those included a new ridge over the Branch River. Show here is alternative three, four A, four B. We also looked at keeping the road where it is today and adding a signal to mitigate the site distance issues and improve safety. And we also looked at creating a new corridor behind the fast normal, which is along some state right of way to connect to the east. So through the public process and through our working group meetings, we vetted those concepts. If alternative two was highly favored, this would create an at grade connection behind the fast normal. We looked at several different alignments of this, but essentially we are moving forward with alternative two C, which pushes the roadway away from the fast normal building, which does require some cuts into the slope there. At the top of the screen, you'll see the circle that is will be a future roundabout that we are looking at. That was something that was highly favored by both the public and the working group to control traffic operations.
Ellen, where is Jay Blanchard's building? And right here, just required reference.
Yeah, Jay Blanchard Building is right here.
Yeah, we'll share the detailed plan.
And we give more insight relative to Jay Blanchard's situation.
So a little bit more about the Route 101 Bridge. It was built in 1933. As I mentioned, it is on the state's red list. It's also eligible for the national register since it was part of the original historic development of the state highway. Essentially, the bridge, we did some due diligence on the bridge. We determined that the concrete is sound out there. However, we saw some areas in deterioration on the underside, which is shown here. So we recommended some non destructive testing. So essentially that took some cores from the bridge. Concrete cores were then examined by the lab. And the results came back that the bridge has alkalized silica reaction or ASR. And essentially in layman's terms, this is known as concrete cancer for a bridge. The gel-like substance that expands and cracks. And we're not able to rehabilitate the bridge due to this substance. So as a result, we are proposing that the bridge be replaced entirely as part of the project. So to jump into the design, I know this is a little hard to see on the screen, but we've got, this is what our preliminary design set looks like. You'll see that the road is in yellow. The sidewalks are shown, sorry, not the sidewalks, the shoulders are shown in brown, those five foot shoulders. And then you'll see the impact areas, slope impacts shown in sort of the neon green. So starting right here, this is the start of our project near Marlboro Street. Shown here is the cross bridge. That's a connection that the city of Keen is proposing in the future to connect that rail trail over the Stone Arch Bridge. We are not constructing that as part of our project. However, we're aware that that construction was planned and we're not doing anything that would impact that from happening in the future. As you continue east, we do have some resource area impacts as a result of the widening. Do you continue down the road? We're showing the new bridge at Branch River. And then you'll see we're discontinuing Swansea Factory Road in its existing alignment. We do have some BMPs or best management practices for some storm water treatment proposed in those areas. The road will be discontinued and instead we're showing this roundabout that will be constructed here that will create this new connection to Swansea Factory Road. So this is the property we mentioned before, Jay Blanchard's property. We are aware that it is significantly impacted by the roundabout. Right now, that building does sit within the state's right of way. So Davis had ongoing conversations with him about essentially the impacts to his building. So we'll continue to have those discussions as the design progress, but be very much aware of these plans and the impacts. So moving along Route 101 to the east, we do have some holes that sit up on the hillside. So we're really trying to minimize impacts along that side. At the same time, we are challenged by the current river along this side of the road. But we are able to achieve those 12 foot lanes and the five foot shoulders. Here's another glance at some of the homes here. As we continue the east, we come to the Branch Road intersection. So we did look at installing a roundabout in that intersection. That was something the folks that live along that road would like to see. There are significant challenges there because of the hillside on the side of the road and also because of an existing bridge structure on Branch Road. We really just don't have the footprint to put a roundabout in at this location. But what we plan to do is widen out the road so we can have a left turn lane into Branch Road. And we have the ability to realign through some pavement striping, the approach, the self centered approach. So along with some clear intersection, I think we'll be able to improve the site distance and make the operations better for those people. Next, we construction operations. I'm sure this is something town of Swansea is very much concerned about. It's something we've just started to vet as part of the project. We have looked at the bridge construction and we believe we can keep one lane traffic open at one, at all times throughout the project. So there's no need to close for 101 in its entirety. However, it's sometimes we may need to have alternating one way traffic, either controlled by police or temporary traffic signal. There may be a need to detour some people down Swansea Factory Road, but we understand there's limitations to doing that. We should give the roundabout that's at the other end in Swansea that only has so much capacity. So it's not a solution for us to detour everyone on Route 101. We do have Branch Road that may potentially be a detour for folks looking to go into the city of Keen, into the downtown. But it's something we continue to vet as we move into final design. Last thing I want to touch upon are some cultural and natural resource updates. So we did do a survey, an acoustic survey of the bats over the summer. We did find two species. We found the northern long eared bat, which is listed as endangered. We also found the tri colored bat, which is proposed to be listed as endangered out here. So that will mean when we get into construction, excuse me, when we get into construction, we'll have to put some limitations on when they can clear trees due to those bats being present. We did conduct an architectural survey for the roadway. Shown here in green are several buildings, which we think have some historical significance. Right now, we've been trying to avoid impacts to these properties through our design. Those surveys are ongoing to determine essentially the release impacts. We also have the two bridge structures, which are Stone Arch Bridge, which is considered, is on the national register. And then the Branch River Bridge, which is eligible for the national register. We did look at archaeological findings in the area. We did some onsite investigations. You can see we started with a rather large area shown here in the yellowish orange. That helped advise as to what we could do with Swansea Factory Road, although ultimately the public pushed us into alternative two and away from many new bridge structures. So we didn't do a deeper dive into those locations, but we did do some GPR at two locations along the new Swansea Factory Road alignment. One of those areas was shown as area two with along the Branch River. That essentially, we did not find any archaeological findings, things built in there along the Branch River. And then GPR in area one, which is up where the roundabout is, we did find potentially through the GPR, some buried remains from the former mill uses in the area. So during construction, we will have to monitor that to make sure that any archaeological finds are protected. That, turn it to you.
Yeah, yeah. So Ellen mentioned the corridor and the constraints and our goal to enhance pedestrian and bicyclist accommodations. It's a, it's a, it's a challenge out there between the river residences and so forth. We are aware of the fatality that occurred just over a week and a half ago, which was to the west of our project limits. So we know that there are pedestrians. And so in working with the city of Keen and also the Southwest Regional Clinic Mission, we're, we feel that the sidewalk sidewalks are at least an enhancement, certainly not the most ideal situation, which would be sidewalks and or multi use paths along that corridor. We haven't gone there. In addition to those discussions, we heard from JB Mack at the Regional Clinic Mission that in the future, they're working to develop a metro transit, like on call transit operation there that folks that, you know, want to transit in the area, either on 101 or even south into Swansea area to some degree, would give that service a call and they would pick them up and they would transport them downtown. So we are aware of those challenges out there. There are some things in the works and so we just want to share those with you folks as well. Awareness at the least. So the next slide talks about our continued efforts or required efforts as we address our NEPA, our National Environmental Policy Act. There are a lot of requirements that we have to go through and meet for that federal funding. And one of them is to identify the opportunity for folks in the public to be involved with the project as a consulting party. You can become engaged if you would like from an environmental perspective, specifically the natural or cultural aspects. And if anyone from the public would like to do that, you can let me know. And there's a process by which you'd have to reach out to the Federal Highway. I provide you that information, but there's a federal highway application process, if you will. But it provides folks that opportunity to become involved if they would like to. And again, if you would like to, you can certainly let me know and I can work to facilitate that connection. So in wrapping things up, so from project schedule perspective, we were really working to do our diligence out here in meeting with all the public, the you folks as well. Clean our environmental requirements. One thing that we have to do is develop a draft NEPA document, which captures and highlights all of these environmental efforts that we've collected and completed and get that in a draft form as we progress to a public hearing. Public hearing for us is a very big milestone. It allows us to have a formal meeting open to the public with a commission of three people that oversee it, the project that is, that public hearing. And with a goal of finding a necessity of, for the project, right? That they would support the project, speak on behalf of the public after hearing their testimony relative to it. And so we're targeting that this summer. We've already started the process for it. The harbor, CHA has done great work with us all to advance this project to that point. It allows us to go into the final design phase, final design phase of the work. We're working to really nail down the drainage, the footprint of the project, develop our ready way plans. Ready way plans, which then allow us to negotiate and identify impacts with individual property owners. Identify the impacts, the cost of those impacts of property owners and negotiate with them. And develop those plans that we would then put out for bid for construction. Contractors would take those plans, bid on the contracts, low bid contractor would be awarded the contract and we'd be off to construction. So our final design efforts, we're targeting in the years of 26 and 27 and a construction effort starting probably in the spring of 27 itself as well. Right now, the project is targeted to be about a $17 million construction cost. It really hits on a lot of facets for that section roadway, about 1.0 miles of roadway. Ellen talked about the removal of the concrete slab, which deteriorating, that's almost a hundred year old concrete slab. And as you can imagine, that's deteriorating and working its way up through the pavement. So we have perpetual pavement need, improvement needs. The red listed bridge would be replaced. The safety at that Swansea Factory Road intersection would be mitigated greatly with the shifting and that roundabout. So just a very impactful project, we feel for that segment of Route 101. Kind of extending that improvement that happens 20, 30 years ago with that expansion to the west. So that's what we have for our schedule and our improved project, proposed project. And lastly here, I know you, the board has a hard copy of the slideshow. I'll send Mike a link to our website and I'll also send you in the interim a copy of it, electronic copy of it. But my contact information is here. You can reach out to me directly if you have any questions in the future as we progress. We do have a few more years before, as we complete our efforts to get to construction and we'll have, you know, we'll have continued collaboration. We can even come back in the future and give another presentation as we, as we work to firm up that construction operation. Ellen mentioned construction operation, which will be challenging. There's what, 12,000 vehicles a day?
Yeah.
12,000 vehicles a day on this portal. So with the narrowness, single lane operation of the roadway, the need to do full box reconstruction, which is, you know, moving that concrete slab and digging down three to four feet and building it back up will be a challenge, will be a tedious construction effort. In addition to utility relocation, drainage construction, retaining wall construction, bridge construction. We expect it to be a two and a half season construction operation, two and a half seasons. For New Hampshire, for us means starting in April, getting through November, if we're lucky, into December of each year. So we're looking at probably at least two and a half construction seasons to get that job done. So with that, that concludes our presentation and open up for questions.
Bridge is going to look similar to this one or what type of bridge is it now?
So the bridge that is there today is a rigid frame structure, meaning a mass of concrete with, if you look underneath, I don't know. On the, on the front sheet, if you will, of the slideshow, if I'll go back there. You can see it is a beautiful bridge. It has some stone fascia. Unfortunately, we're proposing a steel a girder bridge. So meaning it had a concrete deck with steel girders underneath. We, we haven't had the discussion yet with the resource groups, the natural resource energy groups. But we expect they'll ask us to reuse the stone fascias there. And the limitation or constraints we have with replacing the bridging kind is to span. The span that we have to construct to now, which is a longer span across the river, won't allow us to use that same kind of bridge. So 100 years ago, almost 1933, they had, let's say different, probably no rules and regulations relative to spanning the river. Now we have certain rules that require we span the river plus extra width. So that just doesn't allow us to put back the same type of bridges you have.
So this will be a lot wider than the ones that.
Both spanning the river, yes, and width along 101. Yes, yes, yeah. And as we replace the bridge, you folks travel this border, you probably are familiar with that, with the very core site distance. If you're sitting on Swansea Factory Road or even traveling on 101, it's a challenge. So we'll be improving both that site distance along or from Swansea Factory Road as well as along 101 to improve that, that geography and that site distance.
Any street lighting? Anything like that? Or the new wider shoulders?
No street lighting proposed, no.
I noticed up close to Branch Road, it's going to split again. But I see that, I'm following the road, I see that. Did the road actually split again, like with something in the middle? Some parts of this road is split, right? It would be what's in the middle.
Yeah, so at Branch Road today, what you have is those two, one through lane each direction and a wide shoulder. And so when somebody's sitting there wanting to make that left turn on the Branch Road, folks are into that wider shoulder. So for us, we felt it was a better situation. Again, ideally would have been a roundabout, that's what people ask for, but as Ellen shared, to the south of Branch Road, right opposite that side, there's a steep embankment. And at the top of that embankment is a business, landscaping business of some sort. So it didn't fit. So what we're doing is we're widening that roadway. And what you see in orange there is simply a painted island that will allow for that separation initially and then to carve out that left turn lane to get those left turners outside of that through traffic lane to give them some an area just to get out of, yeah, some area of surprise, if you will, to get out of that through lane. And not, you know, not have your white knuckles sitting, sitting there wondering if someone's going to hit you from the rear end because you're in potentially their lane, if you will. So it's improved from that bypass shoulder situation that exists.
So this has solved a lot of problems. So it's just putting a load on, you know, roundabout.
It is, it is. It is, it is, uh you know, we've talked about the bridge, the pavement structure, the the full full box. Really build it to a to a current uh roadway that that will last for points in time. There'll be what, uh two, two-and-a-half feet of of select material below the pavement. Uh that concrete will be gone, so it'll be a it'll be a new roadway. Sorry, yes.
Yeah, hi, uh Mark Scalera, uh I'm going to do two things, I'm going to say them as comments, whether you want to uh respond to them, it's fine. Um so the first thing is the Branch River, um there's a diversion, diversion dam off of that that feeds Wilson Pond, one of the two. Pride bodies of water in Swansea, so during your construction, um as well as what you construct, the bridge. Uh and all that, you know, all we ask is that you make sure you're not doing anything to damage that water source, right? Um the cancer that you, the um cement cancer is probably caused by road salt. Okay, on that bridge, that's that's fairly common, unfortunately, so uh you know. Designing that bridge so so it flows off of the bridge as opposed to into the water off the bridge is key to me. Uh the second thing is having a circle there is will might be increase the traffic on Swansea factory road. A lot of residents there, uh actually continuing through the circle on Lake Street where I live, it's it's residents as well. Um and it's a now, it's a narrow road as well, right, I do drive it quite often. Um how are you gonna handle that change, because you're, there are people that walk that road as well. And we only, if you're seeing a part of Swansea factory road, not all of it. Um and I don't know if there's weight limitations on that road uh or not, it probably should be. Um if there isn't, you know, but yeah, it's it's not a wide road and it's gonna cause some problems for those residents.
Yeah, thank you for that, so a a few things, I could certainly get some insight relative to all of the topics you brought up, Mark, right?
Mark.
Uh so some for a water quality perspective, during construction, uh the DOT has a. At least one to two people overseeing the construction on a daily basis, they're onsite every day. Addressing and overseeing the contractor operations, make sure that they're being compliant with. The design intents, all the environmental rules and regulations that that they're not uh outletting, uh let's say. Stormwater directly into the river, certainly a resource that that uh that we're sensitive to. And so uh we also have oversight from uh uh folks in our Bureau of Environment Office, right, in the DOT. Also, it goes out and inspects all projects across the state to ensure even a higher level of of compliance and performance to uh. To those rules and regs and and that we're not fouling any of those resources, so hopefully that gives some. Relief to and appreciation for how we operate relative to those to those operations. So for ASR, our perspective, that concrete cancer that Ellen mentioned, it 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 is uh solved, it's certainly. Prevalent in New Hampshire, we certainly this time of year, um we did find chlorides in the bridge.
Yeah, I did mention that.
Yes, we we found chlorides in the deck, um but as well, uh the this alkali silica was a a component that was added in. It at that timeframe, the early nineteen hundreds, so that that's there as well, both of those. Um led to the need to replace that that bridge, so. Uh and so then you you talked about the uh roundabout, the uh and the impact of Swansea factory road, so. Uh certainly appreciate that that's a cut through today and it connects to the roundabout on the south end at Route twelve and then and then ties into. Uh say South Keen, if you will, it takes through the Keen as you progress north, so um. We've been through that, I've been through there, appreciated the neighborhoods through there, uh. I don't know if that'll make it easier, we we find that there's a pretty heavy volume on there already and surprisingly, folks that come from Route twelve. Even want to take a left out of Swansea factory road and go into town that way, so uh I don't. It 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 is a, so it's a, did he drive through there, you can see that, Stone Arch Bridge, uh we haven't modeled. The impact relative to the introduction of the roundabout there, I I think that the volumes would be very similar. Um and I think folks will find their way and uh. Along Swansea factory road as they do today, they forced themselves to make that left today, so.
Yeah, I do want to add, there is a truck restriction um on Swansea factory road in now Swansea. So as far as the noise being generated from trucks, that certainly shouldn't increase. Um it there could be some folks that find that route to be more desirable, but generally folks headed up on the Keen are continuing up. Up to Main Street, so I don't think there'll be a significant shift. Uh we did do a sensitivity analysis on the roundabout and we said, what if traffic on Swansea factory road doubles, which I'm not saying it does. Definitely won't double, but the roundabout still will operate just fine, so.
Just that a road off of Rotary is more obvious than the road off of the normal road, right?
Is there more traffic around the Rotary in Swansea and on one of, what you said twelve thousand, right?
Yeah, that's a good question, I don't know off the top of my head.
It is higher.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
I would think it is, but that's even more.
Yeah, so you're expecting the load on that would be half of the twelve thousand?
We can still have the twelve thousand on one-on-one and then it's the the load that's on the water.
Got it.
How does a sewer pipe from Marlborough cross the river there, is it under the bridge?
Under the river, to the north, under the river, um in the city of Keen will be replacing the water line. Part of the project and we're trying to determine now if that would be on the bridge or if that would.
So fortunately, CHA is also doing the design for the city for the water sewer, so uh it. No sewer?
No sewer.
Stay staying.
Sewer probably nineteen eighty, it's probably.
Okay, alright, so the water line then, so so that's great, you know, have that that uh consistency. Well, there I do, so. Sure, yes.
Yeah, well, we want you from East Swansea, no, from a from a proximity where the Graves Road is uh. Heading uh east along, you got that steep bank that goes all the way over to the uh Branch Road. You're gonna have to cut into that to gain more road access?
We are to some degree and you can see here, uh if I can just pointer, so um. In this area here and then further to the east, we are cutting into that embankment uh to a to a certain degree. These larger green uh out pouching of of slopes or green areas. Dictate or show that we're we're cutting into that embankment. And so, yes, we're aware of that, uh they're they they're very close to the edge of payment today, they they went very abruptly. Uh and so we'll be, yes, we'll be into those. Early on, we talked about and we heard from the public that um. The trees and those slopes actually prohibit sun getting in and hitting the roadway the these times, this time of year, right? So we talked with our maintenance folks and they said, oh yeah, it'd be much better when we clear that out. We do acknowledge the impact of the property owner, the property owners will be uh compensated for the impact. Uh and it's likely that we'll seek an easement there so that we can maintain it in the future. Uh so there are certainly some cuts along Route one-on-one, and Ellen, if you go back one slide. So how about the next slide? So similarly, when we relocate Swansea factory road, um Jay Blanchard's property uh does also rise up. Uh in in grades pretty quick, pretty quickly here, so we're seeing a need for a significant. Rather significant impacts and slope along Swansea factory road on that east side as well, so. Uh so we do have some slope impacts relative to the project, yes.
Now that other roundabout that comes on to one-on-one and is done by the old Cheshire Bottle Company or cut that grid where it is at. Uh you're gonna be taking some of that property along with, I think there's, there was an old stone shop there uh on the left. And then there's that great building that Bill might be referencing to uh Jay's place, Jack.
I don't quite know where the convenience store, oh, the convenience store, yeah, so. Yeah, you're right, yeah, yeah, that area is right here if I'm following correctly, and so Mr. Blanchard's property is here. Uh and I'll talk about these in a in a in detail in a bit here. Yeah, so Mr. Blanchard, uh Rob, who works with Ellen at CHA, and I met with Mr. Blanchard, his wife and his attorney in Keen. Uh to share with them the impacts, and so if if you can see it, the existing building that Jay owns is is here, it's under the footprint of those roundabout. Uh we were very open with Mr. Blanchard and we we shared the the plans and the proposal. Uh it was a constructive discussion, I I felt, and uh we have a a. Plan, if we can, to to take that building and to shift it back on to Mr. Blanchard's property. Uh and give access off of either Swansea factory road or one-on-one if we can do it, so. It's a very conceptual uh alternative, but I know Mr. Blanch would like to keep that. Uh facility, it is a, it is built on a slab on grade, so it could be somewhat readily picked up and moved. Um we'll have continued discussions with Mr. Blanchard relative to that property there. Uh and and the potential for that relocation as we progress. We've also had some very preliminary discussions with um Miss Miss Freeman. Who is, of course, the wife of the owner, Ian Freeman of that Moose Mart and the adjacent facility. Uh been working to communicate with Mr. Freeman, uh it's a unique situation that we're working through as we progress. What what's unique about uh a few of these properties, Mr. Blanchard's, the corner of his building is within the right-of-way today. Built it uh a hundred years ago when this was a, when this was a a. Uh oh, yeah, it had a rail, yeah, so it's a history, you you probably all know it. Well or better than I, this was the main front line for the rail system and this was a spur that came in through here. And serviced this area, it was a hub of industry, if you will, a hundred years or so ago. Everything from chairs to, you know, wood products and so forth, it was a mill, uh matter of fact, uh John Graves. Uh building is is part of that old, that facility, that mill that that's there, he's got some components still of the mill building. Um and so uh but back back to the um Moose Mart. Right now, a lot of their operations along that part of their building is also within the right-of-way. The right-of-way is about seven feet off the corner of their building, so it is a challenging situation. We are winding towards their building, so we have uh, we have to appreciate their operations and what their plan is going forward before we. Identify any 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 further solutions there for them, we are showing uh for transparency, we are showing is a small building, there's residents. The Moose Mart and a small building just to the east of that, we are showing that being acquired because it would fall within the right-of-way. Uh what the disposition of that Moose Mart will be is yet to be determined, I will bet that out with with Mr. Freeman when we can connect with him. So that gives insight to the topic that was brought up. We have met with quite a number of folks out here, John Graves, uh John and Judy from Prime Rose. We've had meetings with the Manadok Housing uh Group. Um we've also met with the Keen Mini Storage as well, so doing our diligence to. To share the projects and those impacts for those folks at the at the higher level and anyone else that would like to to have that discussion with us, but. That's what we've done for diligence so far. Any other questions?
About Tommy's presentation.
Right, thank you. Alright, so I can leave this hard copy behind if anyone, I don't need another copy. So appreciate the time tonight and uh again, uh feel free to reach out any questions, so. Bob, give us further insight as we progress.
Thank you.
Very interesting, yeah.
Good job, Alan.
Yeah.
Very important.
Very interesting.
Yes. That's got a long way to go. Yeah, yeah, we do, I thought you'd been home with that too. He is, I worked very closely with him, I asked him, what was it, number of years, yeah, I know, thirty years. Yeah, he was used to playing with public. Yeah, you know, you can see a really great side of us. So many guys. Questions on that? Here now, we'll go to DPW Director, Joe Russo.
Sorry, Christian Hill Room. Pretty much sure after what we're talking about, yeah, federally funded uh project, so. Design has been progressing on the Christian Hill Village Bridge. And the suggestions for historic mitigation because that bridge is considered historic. Um was consideration of adding streetlights somewhere to open up on Main Street. We don't, um prices, yeah, it's probably whatever happened anyway, but uh yeah, it's changed so much, but um. So wanted to gauge the board's interest on if you want us to get them, get the prices. Uh it would be a local cost, whereas the construction is federally funded, so this would be fully a local cost. And.
Are lights in general or just the specific design?
Lights in general, but these would be significantly more expensive because it's not just putting a fixture on hold. You have to put conduit in, in uh post, so you're. Surprise me, four hundred dollars to put a regular ever-source type street light up on pole, uh but this would be. Specific with the ones out there that match up where you've got con, it would be a post, so it would be substantially more.
So is the question, A, doing lights and then B, to match this?
Yes.
Because otherwise we wouldn't be doing lights.
Yes. Or you could put up a few, I think, two streetlights would make sense.
So there are two questions here, are we gonna do lights and what type of light? Yeah, what were you asking?
Yeah, I think at the bare minimum, it'd be some ever-source streetlights for for safety in that area, but you want. Match it with Main Street, put up those, something very similar, maps them.
So the wiring is gonna be the same.
No, because ever-source is just put them up on telephone poles in the area. This would be as. Couple of conduit uh wiring posts. Would be substantially more, but the engineers haven't looked at any of it, they didn't know which direction they were going to go. And that would certainly be a local cost and.
The the lights that we're talking about, they're right by here?
Yeah.
And they go to the intersection and stop?
Yeah.
That's the end, the last post down by.
It was the main, Main Street reconstruction project, so the time to do something like that won't work everything. Uh yeah, so you wouldn't want to decide in three years if you want to put those those lights up, so this is gonna be opportunity.
But what I'm trying to get to, those lights so could, yeah, they just, they hit the intersection and stop and we want to continue them up over the bridge.
But whether we want to or not, it was a suggestion.
Yeah, but would, would the suggestion, would that be up over the bridge and onto the other side?
Not my suggestion. A suggestion was, yes, correct, to go up the bridge and probably the span of the project, the intersection with Star Street.
Well, I'm not understanding, but when we had, when we're not, you guys. When you guys talked about this bridge, wasn't there a part of this bridge gonna be a walking section too?
That was an, that was an option, I mean, it's gonna have a sidewalk.
It's gonna have a sidewalk.
Was considered at one point, was just making.
Yeah, so so we know we're gonna need some kind of lighting if we're gonna have people walking, right?
I think it would be.
Yeah, we we gotta, we gotta have some kind of lighting. It's just the fact, how much do we want to spend on?
In the funding source.
And I don't think the, a light bulb is gonna be that big of a deal because of the LED lights, right, I mean, it's something like. No, no, well, that and the installation.
The installation, like I said, without without present, now you're gonna have to pull, you're gonna have electrical conduit in the ground, it's gonna be substantial. Amount, it's not gonna be like the ever-source four hundred dollars, you know, from a street light up on the telephone.
That's what I was wondering what this Main Street costs, because I remember that, you know, I think we bought the conduit. Because the road was stuck out, threw it in at the same time, which you can do over there. I'd be in favor of the streetlight, uh with the solar panel on the top, on the south side of the bridge. You'd have some nice drop lights over the sidewalk and have the solar panel behind it facing south. Not really.
So this has to be into reason why now?
Yeah, they're in the design. Or if we're just gonna do ever source after the.
So so when they design this, they're gonna say, oh, we're gonna dig up this road, the car is gonna work.
And then like you said, then we have the other issue of the funding source, where is it gonna come from?
So the the solar powered ones, those are out of out of pocket?
Yeah, yeah, I need I need light, I need the out of pocket, you know, the grant wouldn't cover any of that.
So those are possibility of getting the three options considered. The uh ever source option, the solar option, continuation.
Yeah, we gotta ask, we gotta ask the engineer, look at that, but the ever source is just simple, we just do that on our own and have the lights after.
So we know with that number, it's just based on the number of poles.
Yeah.
Four four hundred bucks a piece.
Yeah.
So could we look at the other two?
Yeah.
Is it related, is it extreme, there's a lot of hours to.
So, but it's gonna be more than the engineers will have to do as part of the project.
If they were expecting us to do it, I don't like to want.
They were they were asking us to go back and look at the. I'm trying to see if we had, if we had it broken out on the bid specs or not.
Where's these light bulb start, the bridge?
Yes.
You go to the bridge for the intersection?
And at the intersection, there's a regular streetlight on pole, LED. So not quite a common at the intersection.
I think it looks great right here, and we'll how far we're gonna go, we'll add it, we need to personally, but.
If you look at it and rule it out as opposed to ignore it. I would just just be guessing, I don't know how much the pole's gonna be, but left conduit is going through the roof, it's cold, it's substantial more. And then the work and time to do it, I I think it's gonna be north of twenty twenty five grand, I would guess depending on like. Found the bid specs and it was an alternate, uh so the Pat Ross, who was the contractor, we went to do all of Main Street. The sixty one thousand in twenty sixteen. Just for the streetlights? Well, yeah, the poles are the pole.
Yeah, so you gotta count on the poles.
Cause the grant, we wouldn't be doing as much as that, that's why I know, I said I was putting a rough without knowing the cost, I would guess a minimum of twenty thousand, but it would be. Substantially less poles than than uh Main Street, but it's. We'll try to come up with something more accurate, but I would guess somewhere in that thirty thousand dollar range.
And then where would the funding come from?
I don't know if the town bridges, capital reserve fund would would count. You know, the only one thing I caution you to do, the covered bridges. We have more decking to do, more painting to do, the alarm systems, the the colored bridges have a lot of work coming out of the cameras. They have a lot of work coming up, so I would caution using it from that.
You know my thought about it, I think we should just go with basic lighting right now, we've got bigger things ahead of us and. I'm grateful for the bridge to go in looking nice, I don't think it's gonna be that noticeable over there for that kind of money. That's.
I can do some research and get a more accurate number, but like I said, that that is a question. Makes sense. And while we're on streetlights, Perry Lane, then we'll best we can say for both the streetlights on Perry Lane sort of the most. There are approximately eight or nine streetlights down there that do not function, those used to be uh paid for by the. Association down here, the association went away, approximately a hundred years ago, the association goes twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And somehow those streetlights might have come to town register. Those streetlights are not working, so they're not drawing any power. And ever source was contacting us to see what we wanted to do, one of the options is to remove them and they were removed for free. Otherwise, replace them at approximately four hundred dollars a piece. And then obviously the town would be paying the electric on them.
With LED?
With our, yeah, with LED, yeah, uh but I suggested the board, we have numerous developments in town that are not numerous. But we had developments in town that are very similar to the Perry Lane area and they do not have nine streetlights on them. So it's a question of whether we wanna spend the money and we wanna spend the money going forward to. To uh pay the electric on, but nobody really seems to understand how they want to follow the town's register, ever source. Assume that when the association association went away, somebody put them on the on the town register.
Do you love they're not working because they're broken, or do you think they're not working because the power was shut off to them?
No, the power's not shut, they're they're just broken. They're old, they need to be replaced and and I don't know how long they've been out for. Uh nobody's complained about it, it's just ever source doing their inventory brought up to my attention.
Does anyone talk to Cordell? Uh since we don't know how it ended up on the town register. I I would just think it would be prudent to draft a letter to to the residents there, letting them know that. Absent an association that's paying for the streetlights, uh we're gonna take the lights down. No obligation to them, no obligation to the town, I just wouldn't wanna see us take them down and find out afterwards, oh, we were supposed to be doing it. Uh cause I agree with you, it's a condo association, if it was if it was. Public residences, then that I might feel differently, but under their condo docks, those lights must be covered. If they disband in their association, that's on them.
Don't get worried about that.
I think it would be advisable, just so we don't end up in a in a fight later.
So why don't we finish it with, when he gets his answer back, we're gonna eliminate him, uh and give Joe the okay if it's. Cordell says nothing to do with us, but I do agree, we should notify them. Although we should let the people.
Condo association is probably still there, it's just the the village district that went away. Backside locations that like the those Swansea water, right, so.
I mean, what if they have something that works right now, that we don't know about, that they're gonna notify them up and then, you know.
Thought association wasn't active at all anymore, but I can research that. I don't know, he's here, they have to have.
Definitely in the deeds, yeah. Should be condo docs referenced.
Mike, you know anything about that over there, since you were neighbors with them? About those streetlights, I thought you were saying something about those streetlights.
Do you know if the condo association is still active?
Right.
I don't know that. Gary Dippin would know that though, because he's the one that set it up. I think slide is why there there must have been a separate, or there might have been a separate district for the lights, because the associations got to be active, they were responsible for.
They were, they were precinct and it was a holdup.
I'm just saying in general, as Mike said, the. The association must still be operating because they're responsible for for service. And within within the association, but slide may be right with regard to the lights, it was a separate.
Yes, the light is, I think the lights are clearly not lighted away on the road.
The road, the road is a town road, how how true is that?
Yeah, it's just it's in in the when the lights are in the right of way. Uh but is is it safe to say it's the board's? Opinion that if they want streetlights, it's gonna be their responsibility, okay, we'll we'll work with Cordell on that and um and. I'll do some more data.
And I think it's the board's opinion of Cordell says it's no problem, you wanna have them removed for nothing, we should just. Give permission to say remove.
They wanna keep them, we gotta get them switched back on their register. And then the only other issue I have, uh municipal government sold some old equipment recently, we sold a uh two thousand and eight Ford F five fifty. The gentleman out of Connecticut, the uh old international dump truck, I maybe I was too optimistic and I started to bid at ten thousand, I didn't get any bids. Um after the fact, Gordon Services offered seven thousand for it, if the towns want to take a trade for equipment and materials. With seven thousand dollar credit and uh. Kind of it's it's an old truck, a lot of rust, it has a very good powertrain, but. The prices on the use are kind of all over the place, but usually they draw bids on municipal bid.
How long's it been on there?
It was on there for three weeks.
So we got nothing?
Nothing.
At ten thousand?
At ten thousand, yeah.
Picture on there too and everything?
Oh yeah, all the information. Ninety thousand. Uh powertrain's good, but a lot of rust.
So, do your part.
So the.
Four thousand dollars, you can't change it today. It's just us to get dump truck.
Does the plant come with it?
Yeah. So the option to be a third. Enter into that with Gordon or are we bolstered for a lower price? So the uh offer more than maybe helpful for IRA for equipment and materials. Help with the projects.
New department.
I recommend it, Gordon's been really good to us and you guys, you know, they give us really good prices, so it would definitely help me to have more. From material and such, especially with some of the sidewalk extensions, we're gonna be looking to do this year and needing certain pieces of equipment to do with. That's my recommendation.
And so does?
You agree?
What you wanna? You wanna negotiate between the two parties, whatever is best for the. We know the floor is up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a vote, good. Huh? I'm not thinking about that, I'm just sort of hoping that we're getting uh value for the the track, it just seems awful cheap for a track.
Yeah, like I said, I guess that I think.
Time it takes for me to, you know, I know what I buy for a beep is up, this is a dump truck, I mean. I'm just hoping we held on enough, do we give it enough opportunity, that's all.
No, the bid ended, and I looked, there were some. In similar condition for five or six thousand, people were asking, didn't mean they sell, they sold. But then there are other ones, they were asking fifteen sixteen thousand dollars, but not saying saying they sold. I bought ten, that's why I started that, ten, I bought ten.
I always thought you'd go low there, Joe, to be honest with you, I thought that would be a low number.
Ten?
Ten, yeah.
And I sold quite a bit on municipal bid and usually they get.
Right, it's not about.
It's about the roasting.
About if he puts it on again for ten or nine. And if it doesn't, he makes his best deal.
What's the period of time?
Like it's three, three weeks, like a standard time.
They wouldn't need it, does Gordon need it now?
No, no, they're they were kind of doing us a favor by, I don't think it's something they're really.
My suggestion is just give it a little more time and then give Joe the permission.
Or how about we just put it on, we started on municipal bid at seven thousand and if. Nobody bids on it, they can bid on it, and that that way there gives other people the chance to bid on it if they want, but we usually put stuff on municipal bid and it. Usually gets a lot of bids and sells.
Yeah, I just, I I'm just wondering. I think we're satisfied if we gave a little more.
I'll repost if it's seven thousand dollars, man.
I have no problem taking it.
You'll take it?
No, no.
Yeah, yeah, that works, that worked well, we're out for us, but uh yeah. It's like I said, no rush, it just it's been sitting and it needs to go. And then the other thing is we know about the door, we have another accident, not not even W driver's fault, but uh vehicle collision was hit by somebody. As he was crossing a section down here in California, so. Um that truck's out of commission right now, but uh the other operator was found at fault for the accident, so.
It's twice.
Twice in a week, yeah.
And we got hit in the back?
First one was hit in the back, this one was hit in the front end and the door.
Damage?
Oh yeah.
All ten insurances?
Yeah, the other person had insurance, yeah. Responsibility, they knew they they messed up, but.
Big dump truck?
Was it related?
Can you still use it? Oh, we made him a driving law. Wow.
Do you have time to shovel this weekend?
So how do you operate now, we lost the truck now?
Yeah. So we're gonna try and get it back up and going as soon as we can, but we're gonna make do it all.
Yeah, cause we got storms coming by, you're gonna be okay, huh?
Yeah, he's heard, he's heard they're coming.
Only kidding with you, Jeff.
It's like you already left, he's. Take the ball and run it with it.
Yeah, you know what, when it snows, like three, four o'clock in the morning, Mike and I talk on the phone. He gets a lot of input as far as far as what we do and when we do it, I'll check my messages.
He's gonna have me in the truck, you watch, me sitting in there to my coffee.
We and you and I talked about it, but uh the the next dam to do is Swansea Lake Dam. Uh and so DES hasn't started putting pressure on us, but I think it'd be good to. Try to get maybe an RFQ out there, select a design engineer to start studying that and developing. Uh solutions to address deficiencies, so it just would be an issue issuing an RFQ and trying to get that process started before I leave.
Good thinking. What do we have for time limit on fixing that, how does that work?
We're a bit overdue, our last correspondence, I believe, but there we've been making, you know, they want, you know, make good due diligence and we. We've checked off two of the dams, so I don't think, I think the next letter they'll just send us a letter and we'll just update the schedule, so.
And if we tell them that we're.
We is good. So until we change your mind. Consideration and business, town administrator changes is funny.
We hear that one.
Oh yeah, you gotta go up tonight.
So what's the plan, do you need them on in salt the roads?
Depends if it turns the ice, or if it comes down as ice right away, I'll cut the salt right away, if it snows at first, which I hope so. We'll leave a snore on the road and and salt in the morning, we'll plow the roads until the freezing rain starts.
So where did this set our salt budget now at, cause we we cut it before this all started, now you're using the shit ton of that.
Using a lot of it, using enough significant amount. We had a, we had some left open from last year, so that's pretty helpful. Uh but in the middle, before things got crazy, there was the back of the salt pen had never been cleaned out. So I communicated with the salt company and said, listen, on short notice, I'm gonna need some salt, because we're gonna have to clean out. All the old wet, clumpy stuff that just been in the back.
That's times of years.
Yeah, so we emptied the thing and then, of course, right about when I got it emptied is when it started and. Fair truck was great about delivering right away, but we're we got a pretty good start filing there now, we're we're doing okay on the budget, but. Part of that was, we had a pretty good surplus from last year to start with.
When I was down recently, you have more in there than what I saw?
Yeah, there's probably four hundred ton in there. And each time we go out, uh we use anywhere. Thirty five to forty, forty five sometimes.
And then we'll have it leave it there during the summer, whatever you have left there, right, just since that.
But it had never been cleaned out and uh now it's cleaned out and uh. Yeah, hopefully it doesn't keep going like it has, but yeah, like I said, when we had the most cold road, salt gets down under, once it gets down under twenty degrees, the salt just does not work. It doesn't get the traffic like the state roads, state roads all have the open, not the tight canopies that we have. Uh so I know we're getting criticized backwards, real cold for some of the icy roads, but we were putting the salt right to it.
So all this sand that you've got for us, when did you use that, after you saw, how does that work?
Dirt roads and then when it was really cold and the salt wasn't working, we were mixing it in with the salt. Uh we try not to use salt too much on the paved roads, cause it makes a mess with people's lawns and uh but what? Sand, yeah, sand, but when.
And we mix it down there?
Yeah, but we try not to use the sand on the paved roads. Uh but when it's real cold and the salt's not working, then you gotta use sand, but the sand is used on all the dirt roads and then um.
Why don't you let you sand on the paved roads, what is the problem?
It makes a mess, it makes a mess. It makes a mess, it makes a mess on people's properties and it's not very effective, the cars blow it off. You go put sand on, like Matthews Road is icy when it's frozen. You could go put sand on that, two hours later, you wouldn't recognize that it was sand, the cars just blow it off. But there's, because of wash wells in the area of Centerview, there's, there's three or four paved road that do get sanded. She can't put salt there, but uh. But it's primarily salt on the paved roads, dirt on the, sand on, sand on the dirt roads.
Wilson Pond's open for a little more sand, a little salt.
I think, I think the state has us far beat with uh, with thirty-two and Route twelve, we can stop using salt at all. Uh, Wilson Pond, and I don't think you see a difference, they salt six, seven times to our one or two.
Tell them.
So we don't, we don't go around those.
The backside of Wilson Pond, the, the, there's one road we salt, but you have Route twelve and thirty-two. And the state does, they salt significantly more, they, they'll salt every two hours during a storm and all that runoff winds up in Wilson Pond. We don't, we don't.
Maybe the state cut it out, I can vouch for that.
Every two hours. There have been times that the salt, there was a rainy day. Remember when uh, James Ward and I were having a conversation about the salt thing on Wilson Pond, there was a rainy day last winter that never got over forty degrees. I never salted and the state salted no less than four times.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, what they use the salt, all we use is, okay, you gotta completely different. They replace a lot of ways. Because of that, they do.
And division the state, the, put the sun, low salt area. They do it in other places.
Who, who would we talk to on that? Could it be Frank?
I think it would be Frank.
Jimmy will give you his number.
But I'm not sure, sure, I'll accept that they're gonna be, like I said, we'll be a major.
Well, they'll fight if the DES.
Thirty-two, yeah.
Be a proponent.
They do, yeah, and DES is obviously a proponent, but they use a lot of salt, like not even in the. Same realm as we do.
Might want to work on that. And let me sit over there watching you guys act on it.
Oh, great. Could be here on March nineteenth, what's going on?
It's a, yeah, it's a double, like the backside of Wilson Bond, I could, if it was decided that you want, you want to salt today and more sand it. Not gonna bother me, but you're gonna get complaints from people about the ice on the roads, that's simple. There'll, there'll constantly be ice, but uh. It wouldn't change the way we do things much. But like I said, just keep in mind that. Us making that change is literally gonna make minimal, if any difference compared to how much all that runoff from the state highways.
They do put it down.
They do, but they're, they're obviously, their uh, winter operation plan is a lot different than, you know, we do what's pretty consistent with other municipalities. Uh, but they're, they're obviously have a lot bigger liability on that, little state roads with the higher speeds to try to keep them as, as safe as possible. We had it pretty good the last couple of winters where we weren't using, having any salt. This winter's a more traditional one.
We did it, so we said, let's take some salt money.
Guys took my money.
Money and now it's like, oh yeah, pictures. So we got it. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
Good job, Joe.
Good luck tonight and tomorrow.
So remember the beepers, you can't give me a beeper, you know. It's called a backup, hold on, on the truck and it falls into your driveway.
Tell, tell Tracy where.
You didn't know what we're getting into with, with that. And I, my, my talk all about two, three in the morning.
I stay up to stay up all night, he needs, he needs consulting and.
Guys are so funny.
Have a good night.
Have a great day.
Thanks, Joe. Town administrator job description and posting.
So Alex Herpy is on.
I'm good.
Hi, Alex.
Hello, everyone, I hope you can hear me?
Read that again.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Standby.
Standing by.
Taking notes, Jacob?
Yeah, I follow your advice. My mother, my nanny, Kathy, she's somebody just, you ever have just pepper and eggs? She's a mix subs, pepper and egg sub with cheese.
Oh, yeah.
She fry them up with the nice bell peppers, right? That's a nice simple, I had a little salt and pepper. That was a western, right? This eastern. Was like, we used to eat this. Italian sub shops itself, pepper and egg sub.
Are you able to join us in when your laptop and different account? I don't know if I can boost the speakers, I mean, we're over here.
I don't, my dad, oh, peppers and lemon, it's a western, of course.
Potato and eggs, peppers and lemon.
What was that, potatoes?
Potato and eggs, peppers and lemon, eat the sub. And if the oil isn't dripping down your elbow, you don't want.
That's the most important.
You will crave that for these six months.
You're right, and it was something that you knew was being gonna be, the dinner, quick dinner.
Where did you get that?
Like in, I am delis and.
Really? It's famous, so. And that's what I'm gonna base with that, right there.
The other day.
What, what kind?
Pork, egg and cheese.
Rich on uh.
Deli hands, pork.
Over by the Salvation Army. The whistling pig.
Yeah.
He does that pork roll sandwich, yeah.
What is, should I turn off the, like, maybe this? I know, it's like a technical situation.
Yeah, whatever you yours. But it's different. It has a flavor that it just. Clear, it's called pork roll. Will you invite you over for a breakfast?
Well, afraid.
It's not as big as I. That's pretty.
Got one that is specialized. Technology grade?
It sure is, well, I was good to not, it cut out at a certain point, you guys were talking about different food and just making me hungry, so.
That was the uh, refreshment hour. Alright, so uh, got the job description. Updated incentives a few hours ago, it's around noon, I think. Uh, do you have anything you want to summarize, Alex, or?
Yeah, I mean, just, just the, the overall, um, I don't think that we changed anything super substantial. You know, I sent a couple of questions around that Michael filled out, just trying to make sure that the job description is accurate and representative of the day-to-day functions. You know, as we. So we did move a few things around. Um, uh, a little bit more organized and um. Feel, I feel pretty good about this, but we're open to, you know, any sort of feedback. Um, and then I can get a little bit of.
In fairness, I didn't read it, I didn't say anything. So I, I don't have any comment.
Take a look at one of the companies that's drastically misstated or.
The knowledge I have, I thought it was great, I thought it was understanding, I, I understood everything, I thought it was a really good job.
Could have been reading it instead of talking about sandwiches.
I could have. I mean, for anything, I would think it would scare people away. I'll be like. I was like, oh my god, the responsible for that too? Oh my god, that too? Oh, that too? What was that, Alex?
I said, there's, there's a lot of bullet points, that's for sure.
Yeah, Alex, for sure. But. I think you'll hit them all.
You still think we're gonna get twenty to twenty-five?
Well, and for every bullet point we add, we reduce, no kidding.
That's right, Alex.
I think this is, this is pretty standard for most of the um. Uh, uh, town administrator, town manager, um. Job descriptions that I've seen, um, so I think we're pretty on par. And, yeah, basically from a schedule perspective, um, the hope, I'm gonna be down on Friday in town hall. Um, and the hope is that we can uh, finalize the job description. And then incorporate the job description language into a profile. Um, I know I'll be meeting a little bit with Michael and um, I think hopefully uh, Bill as well on Friday. Um, and depending on the timing and where we're at with everything, the goal would either be to actually post the job on Friday or on Monday. So I know uh, you all wanted to move quickly on getting the posting out there. Um, and with help uh, from Michael and a little bit of work in the last week. Um, I think we're gonna be in pretty good shape to, to get this going, yeah, either on Friday or on Monday to get that first posting um, live.
Was, was Megan able to become engaged? On, on this?
No.
No?
She was back, back today and has been working remotely a few days, she was in the office department today, but she had enough other more pressing matters, so. Just maybe on Friday, we can talk.
Great.
Yep.
But her, her absence has not slowed down getting it done by next week, it's taken. Other things might have suffered, but it hasn't, I don't think we let that slow us down really.
Good. I'm good. Gotta get back in the morning. I'll be here tonight.
Thank you, Alex.
Okay, alright, thank you all. No, I think that's it, I think on Friday, again, the goal will be to finalize uh, the job description. Um, and, and hopefully finalize or get pretty close to finalizing the profile. That the job description will be incorporated into, um, or a summary of the job description, not the whole thing. All of that will then get ready to go posted on the Swansea website, as well as a separate website. Um, that I've created to um, also host all the documents, just to make it ea- uh, you know, and easier for people to find. Um, and so that will be uh, swanzenhta.com. Um, that and on the Swansea website, people will be able to find the same information. Um, so try to make this as accessible as possible for people to find and, and I think my, my guess is that. This will all be out and live on Monday, um, and then I can update you all and we can talk a little more about next steps from there. So I'll, I'll see, I know I'll see a couple of you on Friday.
Great.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Thank you, you too.
Good job getting that together as quickly as you did. Great, administrative, oh, consideration of old business.
The caper. I did, uh, you guys put me on that and I reached out to her a couple of few times and finally she recognized my number. So I kinda left a message and she called me back and. She has a food truck. Green food. She talks and keen sometimes. What she's looking for is a place to come here, make baklava. Different types of food that she doesn't have an oven for. She, she would be using our gas in our oven. So she's very green on a lot of these things. When I talked to her, cause I asked her about inspection of this kitchen, she was like, well, what do you mean? I said. Well, you can't cook food unless you have a commercial kitchen. And she says, but I have my truck, I says, yeah, but you're cooking food here. And I told her that we need to get raw, which is to help inspector to come here with her. And she's gonna have to pay to make sure this is approved for a commercial kitchen. It's gotta have the right sinks and the right thing, so we can legally rent that out to her, you know? And uh, she said, I'm gonna look at it, she called me back and says, you are right, Jimmy, and um. And I said, okay, so I suggested that I'd like to be here for that inspection. And her, and I says, and I'm gonna leave it to you to set it all up. You call the food guy, you tell me when you're gonna be here, when you wanna get in, I'll come in. And we'll do it properly, and then if the kitchen gets approved, then you can negotiate with. Betrayal. About the rent and all that, cause I have no part of that, I just wanna make sure we're legal to have you come in here. And I did say you'd have to leave, we'd have to take inventory of what we own and. You'd be responsible to leave the kitchen just the way you found it. You know, we can't do, bring a yard, step in and leave in it and let's get, we can't have no confusion, and she agreed to that hundred percent. Right, and then she told me, oh, and I know you, Jimmy, you don't know me, and I said, oh, really? And she, she says, yeah, I come in your restaurant all the time, and I go, oh. So I said, well, when the next time you're ready, introduce yourself, so I haven't met yet. But she, she was very nice about, we just gotta do it, I, I know we have, have inspect day.
We have a three day.
Well, we don't. But he might let it slide, it depends what he's, she's gonna actually do. She has to tell him how she's gonna go about, you know, cause, you know, she like to even poison somebody with food. Or travels with it, you know, it's gonna, simple, you know. So she agreed to everything and she said, thanks for all your help, and she'll be, she's gonna call me at the beginning of April. When she's gonna start the food truck up. And I asked her to teach me how to make baklava. And she does some other dishes, some crazy dishes, cause I'm doing a big break. Five hundred people at the Sneaker Ball in YMCA and that's like, it's all green food, I gotta do grape leaves. I gotta do, what's that big piece of meat that you shave?
Gyro?
Gyro, gyro meat. Yeah, so I'm learning all about that. Yeah, comes in a cone you can buy. So I got a guy coming, salesman coming with all the Greek stuff, tzatziki and all that stuff. The grape, and I can go eat those grape leaves, bolt. You gotta hang out with people who eat food. I do all the time, but I'm not Greek, I don't eat grape leaves.
Moustakas, pistachio.
Added menu.
Yeah. Yeah, they got some good food, so I've been looking it up for this job I could do. So that's all that works, Michael.
So the ball is in her joint.
The ball's in her court, she's gonna get ahold of me and I will be here for the inspection to make sure. It's all properly done, I'll get the right paperwork, so we have it on here and we'll go from there.
Making straight about date. Orrespondence. Public input.
Being that like this, you guys got not cars. Maybe gonna have three selectmen out there.
Possible.
Oh, I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask about uh. I didn't three, suing. Employment agreement with Joe Von Elvis. Has that been done or?
Yep. Right, I mean, yes, so.
Yes.
You have those meetings and not public. But then the actual.
Oh, okay.
Contract. Contract.
Yeah, okay.
Or it's not public.
To get transition, we do have one, one non-public under uh. See regulation.
See, I'll make a motion. We go to the public and can see.
Keep it down.
Seven. Good job, guys.
I'm getting hungry and. Thanks for coming out.
I'm going to see Tracy.